This meeting is being recorded.
My name is Commissioner Greg Cooks, I'm Chair of the Gig Harbor Planning Commission. It's Thursday, April 28th, and I am calling our meeting to order. First order of business is roll call. Commissioner Griner.
Here.
Commissioner Krosick.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Soltis. He's on mute, but I know I saw his face earlier. There he is. And Commissioner Bennett is excused this evening, and I don't see Commissioner Bradbury. If you'll note when he joins the meeting, please, Michelle.
Of course.
Thank you. So first item on the agenda this evening is to approve the minutes from my last meeting. If there are any corrections or discussion on those minutes, let me know. Otherwise, I am willing to entertain a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion, I assume you mean to accept the minutes?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so welcome, everybody. The only item on our agenda this evening is another discussion of the short-term rental ordinance, and I really appreciate everyone's willingness to have an extra meeting again this month in the interest of keeping this process moving along on behalf of the citizens of Gig Harbor, and particularly the folks that are interested in getting the emergency moratorium lifted. And so it's been a nice opportunity this past week to look back over. I think one of the things I want you all to be keeping in mind today is the law of unintended consequences, making sure that all the decisions that we have made still make sense to you today after you've had a week to think about them. And then after we get finished going through the table that we've been plotting through, I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity at the end of that to bring up any issues that they think still have yet to be covered, or perhaps were missed in the table. So with that, I will hand it over to you, Carl.
Right, thank you, Chair. And I did want to just note for the members of the public that are viewing the meeting this evening, the, we realized that the table that we had put out with the agenda last week did not have the updates that we made to the table at the meeting last week. So just so there's no confusion for anybody who may not have been here at the meeting last week, this, the table we'll be looking at today does include many of the decisions that were, that the planning commission had made last week. And that is available to anyone who would like to see a copy of it after the meeting and prior to next week. So Chair, I just wanted to make that, get that on the record and let everybody know that we had made a mistake there. Um, all right, let me share my screen. Which one?
Who, Webber?
Are you guys seeing this table? See my cursor here?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so where we left off last week was, actually, we left off on number 11. Item number 11, maximum number of tenants. An STR may house, and that, the discussion kind of morphed into parking. We sort of morphed it into number 15, and we ended up with this final result here of zero additional parking stalls required. But we never really came back and sort of closed the loop on item number 11. And I guess I don't, I don't know if that was because we sort of decided at the time that there was no, no reason to impose any kind of restriction on the number of tenants. Or if we just kind of got off track and started talking about parking, and I don't, I apologize that I don't recall exactly how that conversation went. So I think we, we start here with maximum number of tenants, an STR may house. And make a, make a determination on that. So I'll stop sharing and turn it back over to you, Chair.
Okay, thanks. Okay, discussion. Commissioner Griner.
I, in reading through all the different things we've read through over all this time, I really like the two people per bedroom requirement for maximum number of tenants. And that, I think that's separate from permanent residence. I mean, Carl has a note in here about permanent residents, and I think, well, I'm not sure how we could do that. So I think for short-term rental people, it should be two people per bed. So there you go.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Krosick.
Yeah, Shannon, did you intend to also include a child with that?
I didn't think about that, but I think it would have to be a child under a certain age. If you did stipulate it that way, would be my feeling. But I'm open to hear what other people think.
So maybe like a child seven or under?
Maybe three and under. I don't know.
Well, I think that what the short-term alliance had suggested was two adults per bedroom and two children without any age specification. And that, you know, I am comfortable with that. I think that, you know, folks will travel with, with their teenage children. I think, again, that's getting into a, a well-intentioned thing that would be nigh on impossible to enforce. And it would be kind of self-regulated by, by a family. As I've mentioned, I own a, I own a, it's not a a very small hotel room that's basically, you know, run under a management team and Telluride, Colorado. There's actually a double bed and a single bed in there. You know, so a mom and dad and their 16-year-old child could stay in that room, and they do that all the time. So I don't see a need for an age restriction on there. And I can also tell you from my personal experience of traveling with two kids in some places where, you know, we were in, didn't have another choice. We all stayed, all four of us stayed together in, in one bedroom. So we've had some pretty interesting and, and very nice family time together. But anyway, I don't see a need for an age restriction. I like what the alliance has suggested, two adults, two kids per rented room.
Yeah, I like that, too. And I think it's typical of what I've seen in other regulations.
I can live with that.
So, um, I'm kind of concerned about the, how you separate the people, the owners that are actually staying there and the rooms that are rented. So say you had a four-bedroom house, the owners are staying in one of the rooms, I presume. Then they'd have three bedrooms to rent, basically. And so you could put two people in each of those three bedrooms. That's total six adults plus the owners. Is that the way we should be looking at this?
I think the number of bedrooms available to rent should be limited to two. That, once again, is typical of what most other jurisdictions have, have.
Two, two, when they're not renting out the whole house.
Right.
During that, outside of that 90-day period.
Well, I guess, you know, again, the other side of that coin is someone at some point in their, their life ends up with a four-bedroom house and they're living alone, they've lost their spouse. They want to rent, do short-term rentals to three single people. You know, the folks have mentioned the visiting, you know, nurses that, that some of the short-term rentals have serviced. You know, any, I can imagine any scenario where you know, it would be reasonable to do that and wouldn't necessarily be an imposition on the neighborhood.
Three bedrooms is at least three cars. Two bedrooms is probably not more than two cars.
Doesn't the parking play into this? I mean, if you have, you can't theoretically, you shouldn't be able to rent more rooms than you have the parking spaces available for them. I think. Is that the way that could play in together? I mean, if you don't have three parking spaces, you can't rent three rooms.
Well, and that gets back to the answer to Carl's question, because what I remembered, I know we're all tired, but what I remember at the end of the last meeting was exactly that, that we, the last thing we agreed to is that the STRs have to provide off-street parking for all of their guests. And so that becomes a self-regulating requirement as well that you have just, you know, pointed out, Bob. Am I remembering that right?
We got bogged down and we didn't have enough caffeine to finish the conversation.
Greg, that was my understanding, was that the parking was the limiting factor there, and that we had to have parking for all guests.
So, so, so we're saying that we need to have parking available for the number of, of rooms that would be rented? Or yeah, it's, it's it's, it's hard, because, you know, if we're talking about renting out the whole house, then nothing, nothing has changed necessarily from a single-family residential use to, you know, even though they might have more people staying there than a regular, than a family might have. The house is still really essentially being used as a single-family residential home in that sense for those, you know, let's say 29 days, if somebody rented it out for the maximum period for a short-term rental. And then, you know, they, and they're required to have the two two parking stalls for a single-family home. Our lodging level one, right now, which is essentially our bed and breakfast, requires one, one and a quarter spaces for each room rented in addition to those two spaces. That's our current, essentially, that's our current requirement, and that's what we've been going with for anybody coming in for a short-term rental prior to imposing the moratorium. So if we leave it as just parking, that they need to have parking available for the number of tenants they're going to rent to, then it, there's, you know, I think we're going to end up with a lot of gray area there, and staff is going to have to kind of try and figure that out then. And if we get complaints, then we're going to have to try and sort out how many people they've had there. You know, it just becomes unenforceable, I think. So I think it's either, in my mind, it's either a we're not going to impose any additional parking spaces, we're not going to require any additional parking spaces, or we're going to require just a certain number, a hard, a hard and fast number. I think that's a better way to go, in my, in my opinion.
Give me an example, Carl, of that hard number. Say you had two bedrooms for rent. Does that mean they'd have to have two spaces additional to the, two for the owner?
Right now, we would say two and a half spaces, right? We would, and then Jeremy, we round that up or down in our current code?
It is rounded up.
Rounded up.
All situations. Yeah, so three.
So in that scenario, it would be three, the way we currently have our code written. Or we could say just one space per room, and which I think is where Commissioner Brown was kind of going with it. Typically. Sorry, Commissioner Krosick.
Yeah, I, I think the off-street parking is, requirement is essential, and it doesn't really make too much difference to me whether we say it's two spaces for the entire unit, or one space, or one or quarter spaces per room. I just think we need to have some sort of requirement there. Otherwise, the off-street parking is going to start causing problems for the neighborhood.
Yeah, and I think in a congested area, you're not going to need to worry about enforcement, because the neighbors will let you know if those parking codes are being violated. And, and that's why I'm comfortable with saying off-street parking required for all guests. You know, if it's your next-door neighbor, you're going to see him trekking in and out of there, and it's going to be obvious what's going on.
With regard to the number of bedrooms, that limitation, I, I don't see why we should be more liberal than other jurisdictions. And that's why I feel that two is the right number.
Hey, Tom, which jurisdictions, can you give me a specific on that, or do you remember it all? Something in Washington?
Yeah. Gosh, I looked at five or six. There are only there were half, half a dozen or so cities in Washington that had legislation for short-term rentals. And it seems to me, I made up a table, as a matter of fact, that they all had a limitation of two bedrooms per residence. And that was it. For, for hosted rentals.
How do the other, how do, Commissioner Griner, how do you feel about that number, restricting it to two?
Sorry, I, I got kind of confused if we were still talking people, or if we're talking parking there.
Oh, well, now we're talking. It bounced back to, do we want to put a limit on the total number of rooms that a person that's operating, an owner-occupied STR is allowed to rent out?
Okay.
Thomas suggested a maximum of two.
I'm, I'm fairly, I'm good with that. I, I mean, I understand the other scenarios, but that's fine with me.
How about you, Bob?
I, I think if there's precedent, two is fine, and then I think the idea is, and everybody has all those two. Whoever's in those bedrooms has to park onsite. There's no off-site parking for them.
Right.
I think that's a good fair, middle-of-the-road approach.
So, so now that I'm thinking about it, so is that only with an owner-occupied unit as opposed to a whole-house rental? I mean, are we differentiating those two things?
Well, that's a good point.
Because if you rent a whole house, I mean, you know, lots of times, most houses have three bedrooms and a master, something like that. So, you know, then, then two would not be probably appropriate for a whole-house rental. And now we're down the slippery slope of, you know. Do we want to differentiate those things, or what? But I think that they're almost two separate animals.
So we're, we've decided, and maybe I'm not following, but we've decided that short-term rentals will be owner-occupied only, and, and the whole house will only be rented for 90 days total out of the year, and the rest of the time, the owner must live on the premises as well. So during the, during the whole, when the whole house is rented out during those 90 days, I think we're, we're saying, yeah, the whole house, or I don't think we're limiting the number of rooms at that point. We're only limiting the number of rooms when the owner, for the, for the other nine months out of the year.
Yes.
Yes. So I think, well, yeah, so I think you're right, Commissioner Griner. We do, we do have to kind of separate those two in, in a certain, in in some way, you know, between the 90 days and the and when it's more effectively really a bed and breakfast, I guess, for, you know, it's, it's acting more like a bed and breakfast those other nine months. And I know, you know, I was just flipping through my memo that I had sent, put out on January 27th that looked at a few cities to see if any of those had any, anything in them about the number of rooms. Bellevue, they had boarding houses or bed and breakfasts that may accommodate a maximum of two rooms for rental and a maximum of two lodgers or renters. Single-family home with a boarding house or bed and breakfast must accommodate only a single family in total, so they are limiting it to just one family if it's, if it's the full house being rented out. Uh, let's see, and then Spokane, I don't think had anything relative to that.
Walla Walla, have you got Walla Walla on the list?
Yeah, I do. I'll get to that one. And then Tacoma requires city business license unless renting three or more individual rooms. And then that requires a different license. They call that a transient accommodation license. And sometimes that's depending on the zone, whether it needs a conditional use permit. Walla Walla. It's not allowed, local contact require listing number classify short-term rentals. I don't see anything about number of rooms in Walla Walla. At least, and you know, these are just my notes that I kind of pulled together, but I think I was trying to capture those, you know, I was trying to capture those sorts of provisions in these summaries. So and I also don't see anything in Olympia relative to that. Jeremy, you have anything different?
Same thing. From what I could see, most of the ones that have a restriction on rooms were codes that were adapted from traditional bed and breakfasts.
Right.
Rather than one specifically for short-term rentals.
Carl, I like the definition of Bellingham, which says that if you're going to rent the whole house, it's a single immediate family, but I would expand that definition a little bit to include adult children and grandchildren.
Well, that would concern me because why not, well, first of all, they have spouses that may not, that aren't blood relatives. But why would we want to prevent two families from renting a whole house and coming to Gig Harbor? I, I don't know that there's a good reason to do that.
Well, then how do you prevent two families from becoming three families or four families in a larger house?
I guess you, you just have to have a limitation, like not more than eight guests total, or something like that. I mean, that's the only way I can think of to address. And, and that's really what we care about, isn't it?
Yeah, okay. Well, that would be another approach, and I think that could work.
Well, if you're two adults per bedroom, that, won't that limit it? I mean, you'd only have as many couples as you have bedrooms, and there'd only be two. So that, by having that in place, that solves that problem, I would think.
And, and I think, you know, part, part of the, part of this discussion, too, you know, we have to keep in mind that we are talking about a single-family residential home. This really doesn't change the occupancy type. You know, I spoke with the building official about this. They're still, they're not reviewing these as, you know, they won't review a commercial or a short-term rental as a commercial use. They're going to be looking at it as a residential occupancy. So it, it does not change the occupancy for someone to have a short-term rental there. And really, for them, for the, for the building codes, it really comes down to exiting. You know, how many, how many exits are in the house? Can they get people out of the house safely? And how many bathrooms are in the house? Can they service the number of people who are going to be in there? So if you have 15 bedrooms, then you're going to have to have, you know, however many toilets and, and, and showers that would, that would accommodate that number of people. So, you know, some of this stuff is also some of this stuff would also be dealt with through codes that are already in place.
So, so you're talking, is, I guess that one of the questions that I would have is there, is there a maximum number of or minimum number of square feet per person that is allowed in, in any given building so that you couldn't pack a whole bunch of you know, teenage summer workers?
Right.
You know, you get six or eight of them sharing you know, a single house. I mean, my son is up at UW in a not very big house that's carved up into nine bedrooms.
Yeah. I have lived in one of those myself, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's a good, that's a good question. You know, I asked the building official this, and you know, from their standpoint, I mean, if they were looking at it from that, from that, through that lens, 200 square feet per person, came off, you know, came off the top of his head. That's, again, it, it really comes, the occupancy load comes down more to can we get people out of here safely, and can the house service that number of people that are going to be living there? And, and so that does kind of look at bedrooms. You know, the number of bedrooms that you're proposing for a house. I mean, you can have more bathrooms, I suppose, than bedrooms, but you really can't have more bedrooms than, than bathrooms needed. Have operable windows for, for e-dress and, you know, back door, front door. The widths of doorways, you know, those sorts of things, that's all handled by the building code. And, and again, because they need a business license for this type of use. There would be, you know, the bill, the building fire marshal would be making an inspection on the, on the home to ensure that it's safe. So, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know if that helps or if that confuses things, but maybe maybe it's easy, easier to defer some of this to some of the codes that are already in place.
Yeah, well, I think, I think that, let's, let's cut to the, the bottom-line question, and that is do we want to restrict the total number of bedrooms that people can rent out during the owner-occupied portion, the hosted time in their house? And Thomas suggested a max of two. Shannon said she was comfortable with that. John and Bob, how do you feel about that number?
I'm comfortable with two.
Okay, with that.
Okay. All right, there you have it.
Two. Right. Not more than two. Okay.
And then during the non-hosted portion, I think it gets back to what you were just talking about. There's already codes in place um, I think it gets back to what you were just talking about. There's already codes in place. For those, that maximum of ninety days where, you know, they might be renting it out to.
And then the third part is there must be sufficient parking to accommodate all guests on onsite. Something along that lines, right?
Yeah, off, off street, off street onsite parking for, to accommodate all guests.
And and the other, the other point really related to that is I've seen most ordinances in, you know, state that garage spaces are included. So most residences have two garage spaces plus a couple of other spaces.
Right. And as, and as the alliances pointed out, you know, that, that includes the tandem parking, you know, the sort of stacked parking, and and to me, it doesn't, you don't even really have to describe it because, you know, however they can do it within the the confines of the other cities regulations and codes and such, then, you know, however they do it, they do it.
Yeah. And Carl, you can keep them off the parking on the yard, right?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, well. In theory, in theory, we can keep them from doing that, yes. Um, I wanted to bring up one point, and hopefully this doesn't confuse things too much, but so for our current lodging level one, that means a single, it's defined as a single family residence which provides overnight lodging for guests and may provide meals for overnight guests not to exceed five guest rooms. Now, that, that, that definition was written for, you know, bed, bed and breakfasts, and that was before we had, you know, any kind of Airbnb um, type of use that we were talking about. I'm just thinking in the future here, uh, that if we go with this type of a provision. And I guess part of it becomes a question of whether or not we're discerning any kind of difference between when any kind of difference between an Airbnb and a bed and breakfast. A lot of bed and breakfasts now are advertising on these Airbnb platforms and VRBO platforms and things, and there's really starting to become very little difference between the two. Um, so, you know, I guess, I guess a question comes up for me in that during that ninety days. How are we going to determine whether somebody is a lodging level one? Or whether they're in a short term rental? Because if I'm, if I'm homeowner, A, if I'm the homeowner, and I'm in that situation, and I'm looking at the lodging level one definition, I'm gonna go with five guest rooms if I can. Whereas a short term rental is saying I can only have two. That's something I guess that needs to be worked out in this, and and, you know, the short term rental ordinance, maybe it replaces lodging level one altogether.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, why do we think we need lodging level one?
Well, I don't think that we do, the only thing that gives me pause, Commissioner Brown, I guess, is that because we've said in there that it's going to be five guest rooms for these lodging level ones, and we've, we've been having a hard time finding any kind of state or any kind of definition for um, for bed and breakfasts. And we just, I guess we just, I guess I, I guess that's something I need to speak with the attorney about and make sure that we're not um, getting ourselves hogtied over that in some manner, because I, you know, I don't, if there is, if there is some definition out there that would allow for five, five guest rooms for a bed and breakfast, then we, you know, then we could be creating a problem for ourselves if we were to eliminate that use altogether. So I'm speaking out loud a little bit.
Well, the, the dichotomy between bed and breakfast and short term rental is a critical one to define. I, I've seen that as an issue from the beginning.
Yeah.
Well, I, so I kind of envision that, for example, the waterfront inn. I, I don't. Uh, you know, I, it's functioning as an inn. I mean, it has seven rooms. And and it's essentially purpose built. You know, too, that they carved this small house up into seven small rooms to maximize the profit from it, and it's, it's functioning as an inn, and and so I don't, I don't, I see that different than
Yeah.
than, than what we're talking about. I also, the par, the parsonage has functioned for a long time as a bed and breakfast, and I see that different than what we're talking about. I would see, and I would see going in the future, that both of those places would continue to function you know, the way that they currently are. Uh, uh, being called something other than an STR that's burdened by disordnance or um, maybe burden isn't the right word, but affected.
Uh, as you know, a lot of these small inns, uh, known as boutiques uh, overlap with bed and breakfast as well. They can be very small, five, six, seven rooms is all they have. And and they will also market themselves along the lines of the bed and breakfast, very much blurring those lines.
But the key in our code is that it has to be, it has to be able to meet the definition of a single family residence to be a lodging level one. So in order to meet that, to, in order to be a, a bed and breakfast, and in fact, it will be the same thing for our short term rental ordinance, it has to meet that definition of a single family residence as well. So I don't know how the inn fits into that definition or the parsonage, I'm not sure about that, if they even would meet those definitions.
Well, I know the parsonage that is owner occupied. And, and um Mary lives there and has run that business, you know, for, I, I don't know how many years, but a, a pretty long time already, and and I, you know, she, I haven't stayed there, but um, it seems to be the classic what you would expect, you know. Uh, a beautiful old parsonage, you know, one of the first ministers, you know, lived there, nice gardens, well tended, takes nice, good care of her guests, gets great reviews, gives them breakfast, you know. The classic bed and breakfast, breakfast experience.
Yep. Yeah, we, I, you know, and that, I think that's important, that we, we don't wanna we don't wanna, we don't wanna, we don't wanna uh create something that essentially makes those uses obsolete that, that are operating now as, you know, that's something that's it's working, it's beneficial, and me, and and if it meets the certain, the, the current definitions, I just want to be careful that we don't create something that eliminates those altogether, if, you know, if, unless we don't want to support those anymore within the code.
Well, aren't, aren't uh, the, B and Bs, as you've just described them, uh, simply uh, STRs that have more than two, two bedrooms available.
Essentially.
I think that's, that's the difference, so that if someone wanted to uh, open up a B and B, and they came to the city and said, I want a license, or what do I need to do? He said, well, how many, how many rooms you want to rent? And they'd say, uh, three, four, or five, whatever. Say, okay, well, that's not an STR, and that's a B and B, and the, it's a different set of requirements.
Good. Right.
Kind of answers itself, I think.
I, I think so, yeah, I think so.
I think that's a very elegant solution.
Not to mention, I, I, I think it should go through a much more detailed and complex permitting process. So that, because that, that type of facility has a much greater impact on the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Okay. That answers it for me. Thank you. Okay.
But maybe, these are conditional, right?
Uh, in some zones, but not in, not in all zones, some, some zones they're permitted. And some they're conditional uses.
Do I understand the definition to be three or four bedrooms? Anything more than that is not part of this definition?
Yeah, we did that earlier, Larry.
Okay. Uh, I, I would add, though, uh, I apologize for being late, and and I'm gonna apologize for having to to bow out a little bit early. I, I've had a change in plans uh, thrust upon me since uh, I said I would be available for this night. So I, I will participate for a little while longer, and then I will have to bow out.
Okay, Carl, let's move on.
Okay, so I'm just making a note here, so two, two bedrooms during the hosted period. And did we determine a maximum number of tenants, or we decided to, I, I'm sorry if I missed that?
Two, two adults and two kids per bedroom, I think.
That's during all periods, that's, that's during both hosted and unhosted.
Right.
So as soon as you say two, two adults, two kids per bedroom, per, per rented room. Is that right?
Right.
That, yeah, that's the way to, to do it right, I think.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, Shannon.
Uh, and then parking must be provided, off street, off street parking must be provided. Is that, do I have that right?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, number twelve, minimum rental period, minimum periods of uh, two nights and four nights were mentioned uh, by the planning commission previously. Obviously, our maximum for short term rental would be twenty nine days. Are we still wanting to impose some sort of mental, minimum rental period?
I think the two nights is reasonable.
Well, I, I don't think we can do that without appearing to create a hostile requirement, and here's why. Uh, the STR down the road outside of the city limits will accept a one night reservation and be happy with it. And I think we'll run into a lot of opposition uh, if, if we try to impose a, a two night or, or greater minimum. Uh, and it, and I, and I think it's just kind of a uh, I don't know, an anti uh establishment, anti-business requirement myself. I frequently rent these places for one night, and uh, I don't really see any problem with that. I, I agree, I don't see any, any benefit added by having a minimum rental period.
Well, the reason that I was suggesting two nights is that would just limit the amount of in and out traffic that was occurring uh, as a result of just a lot of one night stays. On the other hand, there may not be that many just one night stays, most may be multiple night stays. I guess it's not something I feel really strongly about, but that was the, that was my reasoning.
Yeah, I understand that, but I tend to agree with Tom, and and even, although the the alliance suggested the two night stay, I, I don't agree with their logic about, about why that, that those people, for the most part, are just passing through, and they don't contribute a lot to the Gig Har, Gig Harbor economy, and they're not really interested in Gig Harbor, but um, again, having said that, if, if they come in, you know, they've had a long day, it's time to pull over, and they want to stay, and there's lots of people, like apparently Tom and I, that always prefer a, a, an Airbnb uh, when we're travel, um, and and so they pull in, they're not loud, they go downtown, they dine at a restaurant, they get up, they grab, you know, breakfast at Devoted Kiss Cafe, I, you know, I think that's I don't see any reason either to, to put that restriction in. I, I don't, um, again, it gets back to, if it's, if someone was and someone is living there, they're gonna, and they're still working, they're going in and out, in and out of their house every morning, and if they both work, there's two cars going in and out, and if they have kids, you know, there's lots of trips in and out, so I, I appreciate your point, John, but I, I just don't see that as uh, enough of a change um, in use, or enough of a disruption to, to put a restriction on, on two night minimum.
I might also add that I think it would be, again, pretty difficult to enforce.
I'll go with uh, Greg and Tom on this one, John, sorry.
No, that, that's, that's okay, uh, because Carl raises a very good point, the difficulty of enforcement, so I'm fine with no minimum.
Yeah, as I said earlier, likewise.
So I have a note here on this one, did we want to cap the non-hosted rentals to ninety days per year?
Yes.
Do we already do that somewhere else? I just wrote a note over here.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, here, I can show you, Commissioner Grina, um, a sec here. And so I just lined out, yeah, lined out number twelve, and then, yeah, we picked up ninety days per year unhosted.
I'm number five, okay.
Number five, yep.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so I took out number twelve, uh, number thirteen, will quiet hours be required? And if so, what are those hours? It seems like most of the ordinances that we reviewed had some sort of mention of quiet hours, some I think had actual hours written, some just kind of had it in the good neighbor policy that it would, you know, that there would be reasonable hours, but I think a lot of, a lot of the ordinances do point to some sort of um uh, quiet hours.
Magnify reader, zoom level eight, ten, four, four, sixteen.
I can zoom this in a bit, too, if that's too small, it is kind of small, isn't it? I'm sorry. Maybe that's better.
Ten days, fine, Carl.
I agree.
I concur.
That's good.
Sounds like consensus.
All right. Sounds good, all right. Okay, so we'll move. Move on, number fourteen, will there be a penalty associated with each violation of the standards set forth in the short term rental section of the code? Uh, we do have some, uh, we already have some enforcement mechanisms available to us, um, in title seventeen. Uh, that then leads to title nineteen, we have some enforcement there. And we also have uh, some enforcement of our business license and regulations. I know that there was some discussion in the past about the number of violations maybe lead to uh, you know, a revocation of that of the permit. And that's something we could look at. Um, and you know, I think there was also some discussion. And, you know, I think there was also some discussion about maybe sort of a, a scaling up of penalties for, for second, third violations. Let me stop, I'll stop sharing this and I can tell you in 501 with our business licenses. We have some, we have quite a bit of language in here actually about it. About revocation of business licenses. In addition to other penalties provided, any business license issued under the provisions of the chapter may be revoked or suspended should any of the following conditions apply. And we have a list of conditions. One of those being the place of business does not conform to city ordinance. The license is being used for a purpose different than that from which it was issued. The licenses, the licensees continued conduct of the business for which the license was issued has or will result in danger to public health, safety or welfare. Or the violation of any federal or state law or any ordinance or regulation of the city. And then there's, there's a couple others. I think those are the most pertinent, though.
Would that cover noise problems? Carl, any of those words?
Well, I think it would, because we do have a noise, we do have a noise ordinance, although it doesn't have a lot of teeth. Noise is one of those really difficult ones to enforce upon, but we also have in this ordinance, we're putting in quiet hours. We may, you know, when, when we go to draft this ordinance, we'll probably want to either we, we, we kind of have to provide some definition around that, I think. And likely pointing to our, what we have in the code for noise ordinance currently. To ensure that they're not violating that. And, and so I think that this suspension or revocation procedure would include, it includes all city ordinances, so it would include the short-term ordinance, it would also include that noise ordinance. So it would capture that. It's just, again, it's one of those kind of difficult things to, for local jurisdictions to enforce.
I, I can certainly see that. And Carl, I would kind of vote for what you're saying here is that this, this portion of the ordinance should reflect other already prior established codes and ordinance, ordinances that are reflected in, in the table that you put forth, 17 and the others.
Well, I get the sense, Larry, that some of the citizens don't feel quite that comfort, comforted by the code that's out there because we heard some comments that there were some problems and I don't think Carl's got records of any of these problems coming to the city. Which kind of strikes me as odd, if, if people were upset about it, that they just kind of internalized it and didn't call anybody. So I don't know if our city, our systems are fully functional. And I certainly don't know if they called the police because it sounds like the police never got any response, any complaints either.
Well, that, that's the bottom line. If, if somebody is not willing to bring such an issue to an authority that can address it, then, then there's nothing the city can do.
True. If they didn't, and then shame on them. If they did and it got lost in the records, shame on us. So I don't know where, where the true story is. And maybe Carl, you've got better intel on it.
I can address it a little bit. I know, you know, some noise is, is something that's going to be, you know, they're going to call the non-emergency police line, you know, for a, for a noise complaint. And officers will respond to those complaints, but they're not likely to, the reason we don't have record of it is because they're looking at that as a single-family residence. Or maybe it's in a, an apartment building, but they're, they're not looking at it as a short-term rental necessarily. And generally speaking, people who are staying there, if the police did show up, even if they tell the police that it's a short-term rental, I doubt that that's likely to make it into the, into the record as it stands today. Now, that might be something that we change as we, you know, once we have this, this use in place. And that might be something we can work with the police, the police department on to ensure that we're, if, if they, if they know that it's a short-term rental, that that is put into their report so that we have some records of those, but that's likely the case, that, that there have been complaints. Police respond to noise complaints all the time, but I just don't think that, you know, it's just, it's just how they're reporting it is, is different than what we, maybe what we need in this instance.
So, so what are some of the the financial penalties that are already written into the code? I mean, are they, are they significant? Or are they a hundred bucks?
They are. So the monetary civil penalties for violations of this code shall be as follows. Unless it a different amount slash penalty is specifically provided elsewhere in the code for the violation. The amount of civil penalty per each violation for each day in violation shall be a hundred dollars. At the time a civil penalty is issued, calculation, the amount assessed shall be based, no, should be based on no more than the number of past days during which the violation remained uncorrected since the service of the notice of violation. So we have to get to a notice of violation first. And then if it's not corrected, from that point of notice of violation. And, and in our notice of violation, we give them a certain period of time to correct that. If they haven't, if they, if they haven't provided the correction within that period of time, then we can start assessing this $100 per day.
Yeah.
So.
In other words, essentially unenforceable.
It doesn't work great for things like this that are kind of happening in the moment, you know, that's really for something like I drove a bulldozer into the wetland. That's, you know, that's a little bit more, you know, something like this that kind of happens a little more slowly. This is happening a little bit faster, so. But it, it appears that we do have the latitude to, in, to put in some penalties based on the first provision that I read there. I'll also just say that the city council is interested and I know that they have a study session coming up to discuss code enforcement and our civil penalty process. Because there's, I think there's been, we're getting bigger, you know, and the way we've been doing code enforcement is probably not adequate for how quickly the city has grown. And so I think they're going to be looking at that and figuring out how, maybe another way or a better way or more proactive enforcement. Commissioner Grine, you have your hand up. I'll, like Commissioner Huxman has stepped away for a moment.
So I had written down based on a number of different things that I read and one of them was that the different California cities that they had, you know, a $1,500 penalty after the first offense and that even included operating without, you know, meeting any of the requirements. And then it was five, after that, anything after the first time was $5,000 per. I mean, that's pretty tough, but but I think it's got to have teeth to make it work. So I had written that down. I think at one point Greg had mentioned that as well. I might not be in the right context, Greg, but anyhow, that's a note I had made.
Yeah, it was the same context. Thank you. Commissioner Soltis?
Well, I think I'm interested in the business license. There were some, some language Carl cited earlier about the business license. I, I think and, and the numbers that, that Shannon's kind of mentioning is for when they're operating without a license or doing something that's really outside the normal routine of business. And I think those are, should certainly be heavy. But I think there's two different kinds of things. There's also the thing, well, there's a noisy party and they get a police call and it gets into the system. That seems like a, a little bit, you know, it's not good, but it's not as bad as trying to, you know, run a business without having the proper licenses. So I would think, and just as for a thought here is that maybe we've got a couple of different tiers. If they've got extra cars parked at the house for one night and it, it got to be a problem with neighbors. That's relatively small, maybe that's a smaller issue or a fine. But if it's something where they're doing bad business practices that they shouldn't be doing, like running a, a place without having a license. That should be a lot more substantial in my, in my humble opinion, at least.
Right. Yeah, thanks for pointing out that difference. Other thoughts? Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with your point, Bob. And, and when I've talked about severe and rapidly escalating penalties in the past meetings, it's, it's been with respect to, you know, what Shannon is pointing out and we got to get these, all these underground Airbnbs, you know, on the up and up and on the level. And, and if there is not a severe financial penalty for operating or trying to operate underground, then people will continue to do it. And, and and I liked the numbers that that one city set, you know, 1,500 bucks the first time and $5,000 the second time. You know, that's gonna, you know, people are gonna, they're gonna get their applications in if, if that's the thing. And it is quite easy to track because they have got to advertise somewhere and we're, we have put in the requirement that they have to advertise to a third-party platform. And there's a reason for that as well, because the city needs to collect their, their fair share of lodging taxes. It's not fair that Airbnbs cannot operate and not pay a lodging tax when a hotel room, you know, has to. And so, you know, that's another type of instance that I would see where you, you know, again, you're, you're trying to operate underneath the requirements of the ordinance. But I do agree with Bob's, you know, point that a, a single instance of too many cars parked, you know, shouldn't, shouldn't trigger a $1,500 penalty. But, but there shouldn't be too many repeat violations along those lines where you start having substantial, you know, financial penalties as well as far as I'm concerned. So that gives the public the reassurance that the city means business in, in keeping this whole thing under control and you know, the notion that people aren't going to continue to buy up properties, the data doesn't support that. There, you know, the, again, that the waterfront end was just purchased for $3 million. It's, it's operating exclusively as a seven room in a, a property down on the spit. Even though it's not in the city, but it's just as an example. That property was purchased for $1.7 million. It's, it's operating exclusively as a non-owner occupied Airbnb. There, and so you can go down the list, the property up on Ross Avenue was purchased for $950,000. It was remodeled, so additional, you know, money was put into it and it's operating exclusively as a non-owner occupied Airbnb. So this is happening and it will continue to happen because we, we've seen it all over the country and Gig Harbor is a very desirable place. So the point of all that is people got to play by the rules. And the only way we can be sure that they do that is A, have an, an effective enforcement. We, right now, we have a part-time city employee, or maybe he's full-time, but, but only part of his job, part of his FTE is committed to enforcement of all, every single code in the entire city. So I think that's why the city council is going to have this discussion because it needs to be had, but we, we, you know, to use somebody's term, we need to put some teeth behind it.
Greg, I like what you. Agree with that assessment. I must also say that I'm going to be called away now and I do apologize. So I, I will join you next time and hopefully we will have this pretty much ironed out.
Hope so.
Greg, I totally agree with what you said there about very stiff penalties for failure to register, failure to comply with the ordinance. And I also like the idea of lesser penalties for, or maybe even letters of warning for the first violation for relatively minor issues.
Yeah, we did have, I'm looking at back through some of the comments because I know that, I remember there being one comment that had a pretty detailed penalty scale and somebody had written out and, and I can't remember, Commissioner Brown, you might have written something in too, in one of your, in one of your submittals, I go open up one of those as well, but the one I'm looking at right now sort of had the scale of first offense, written warning, second offense, $100 fine, third offense, $500 fine, fourth offense, 1,000 and suspension of permit for five days. Fifth offense, 2,500, suspension for 30 days, sixth offense, 5,000, suspension for six months, seventh offense, 10,000, suspension for one year. And then an eighth offense would be a permanent ban available as long as that person owns that property. And then it goes on to talk about failure to proper, you know, get proper permits. And and failure to follow life safety requirements would re, would, would result in loss of the ability to get permits as well. That's pretty deep.
You're a good side, Tom. I, I did not provide that one.
No, that one is definitely not yours. No.
Yeah, that, that came back from the public input and.
Yes. Let me see here.
It, it, it came from the, the owner of Heritage Distilling Company. Jason or Jeremy, I think his name was, I can't recall.
Right, 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 yeah.
Justin, I liked it. I thought it was great.
I like the escalating scale of fines, but I'm not sure I'd want to wait till the eighth violation to permanently suspend their right to do this. I think I'd probably do that at a lower level.
Like five?
Yeah.
And, and even those, those numbers sound big. I, I will too, again, just as, to give you an example. That home I was talking about at the spit, there are actually two homes on that property and each one of them rents for $1,000 a night. So and, and then so anyway. 8,000, 10,000, sounds like a lot of money. But when you're pulling in, you know, potentially $30,000 a month, you know, maybe not. So I, I agree with your point is I agree with you, John, that, that eight is too many before it's banned. Commissioner Soltis?
I was going to suggest that maybe Carl and Jeremy think about maybe providing a few examples for each of the two generic categories we're talking about. You know, like the major problem areas as well as the, you know, like business license, no business license or whatever, health and safety. And then the minor ones like noise, parking. So we kind of have sort of a scorecard to, to ping against as we go forward.
Yeah, I like that idea. Let's use our expertise. Let's put Jeremy to work.
Jeremy, did you get that?
He's already worked.
I did.
Okay, good. I saw you, saw you writing there. I'm looking at one of Commissioner Brown's submissions here now. And he has some examples of 500 for a first offense, 750 for a second offense and 1,200 for a third.
What kind of offenses were you thinking of, Tom, for those? Those came from actual ordinances. I, I without going back and reconstructing and I can't tell you what the, the towns were. But they were for, I, I think broadly violations of the, the, the ordinance, whether they were noise, parking or whatever. And, you know, and, you know, I, I think all this, all of this, the, the size, the size of the penalty.
the, the si, the size of the penalty, and I, I agree with Greg on this, is, is the deterrent. You know, these things are hard to enforce. But, but having those numbers in the ordinance as potential penalties, that's what's going to do the trick, you know?
Okay, so are you comfortable then, Tom, with Bob suggesting of letting Carl and Jeremy, you know, put some stuff together for us?
Yes, yes, I am. Yeah.
We, we will do that. I'll just say further staff research.
But I'll, I'll go along with the idea of, you know, stiff fines for the important ones. I, I like that idea. For sure.
Further staff research, maybe scale. Okay. All right, we have two left here. We've got the parking here. In what zones should short-term rentals be allowed? So this is something that we haven't really discussed very much and and I don't know if, if commissioners have considered it very much either. I'm trying to think, I'm trying to think back to your submittals and I, I don't think I recall it ever really being broached much. I know the Gig Harbor Short Term Rental Alliance touched on it. I think we had a few other commenters who touched on, on it. What we provided to you is just, you know, what we do with currently with lodging level one and how that is, where that is allowed and where it isn't allowed. And I do have a table here that shows all three of our lodging uses that I can bring up on the screen as well. That might be helpful to take a look at. See, there we go.
Can you explain what lodging level one is?
Lodging level one was essentially created for for bed and breakfasts.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's defined as a single-family home that provides not more than five guest rooms and may provide meals. So we have lodging level one, lodging level two, and lodging level three. Lodging level two is essentially like a motel, so you can walk directly into the room. And lodging level three is essentially a hotel where you actually have to go inside a building and then to your room. So this table here sort of shows what this, these are the zones across the top. And then we've broken it out. We, you know, in our code, we use CUP and dashes for not allowed. We use CUP for conditional use. And we use permitted for those uses that are just permitted outright. So for lodging level one, for instance, we permit it and generally allow it in most residential zones. So it's a conditional use in an R1 zone, which is just our regular single-family residential zone. That's, you know, most, what we have most of in the city. And then we, it's a conditional use in our R2 zoning. And then it's a permitted use outright in the R3, which is a more of a multi-family residential zone. And then we permit it through our RB1 through DB and B1. So those are sort of commercial zones. We have kind of hybrid residential and commercial downtown business is all commercial. B1 is mostly commercial. The general business zone is meant to be largely commercial as well. But it's a conditional use there. Commercial, it's a conditional use. We don't allow it in, you know, employment district. We don't allow it in the public institutional. And it's not allowed, for some reason, they didn't allow it in these planned community, planned community zones either. And then it's a conditional use in all of our waterfront zones.
So Carl, do you have a recommendation based on all of our discussions so far? Because I'm, I'm kind of thinking that one way or another, we're gonna have a new category here that's specifically called STR.
Yeah, and again, I kind of come back to the fact that these are generally speaking, a lot like, like a bed and breakfast. Even though a bed and breakfast, like we've said, is a little bit more, the use is maybe a little bit more intense. Because it's, you know, year-round and they have, may have five guest bedrooms. They have a requirement for more parking. But I would say generally speaking, the uses are very, are, are very similar. And so I think it, the, it would, it would follow along with this, how we permit and where we permit lodging level ones pretty, pretty closely. Now, we've decided, we've decided we won't use a conditional use permit for short-term rental. So rather than conditional use, these would say permitted use. Wherever it says conditional use.
Now, now the, the would that be permitted with conditions or, and as the alliance had suggested, in which I think seems like a good idea to me, or is our ordinance, I, I, as I read through their suggested conditions, we've kind of covered the waterfront, so to speak, on what they had suggested to be in the conditions and, and I forget the other term that they used.
Yeah, we, well, we would use the, we would use a footer, a footnote like they're using there. And we do have, we do have footnotes in our use table. Maybe, maybe it'd be useful for me to pull that up the use table for you to see. And stop sharing this for a second. But what we would do is we would use a, we would use a footnote that would say that the, the, the provisions of this new code, this new ordinance that we're writing right now would apply to those, to those uses. So then you would look at it, if it's allowed in that zone, as a planner, we would look at it, see that it's allowed in that zone, and then we would go out to the short-term rental code and we would administer that code against their proposal.
All right, Commissioner Soltis.
I, I think that I'm sorry, that's a residual hand, Carl. Can I back off on that? Sorry. My, my bad.
So, yeah, I think the Gig Harbor Short Term Rental Alliance, that's kind of what they're doing. I think they even listed it as, as number thirty-two. I think we have currently thirty-one footnotes under our use table right now. So that's about right. We would have a footnote thirty-two that would say, go see this ordinance and that's, and apply those regulations to this use.
Yeah, okay. Well, it seems that that with everything we've discussed, that it kind of would almost just be plug and play. We've decided it's permitted, not conditional use permit. And, and it should be pretty self-explanatory with all the other things we've talked about that are going into the ordinance about, you know, where it would be permitted.
But I think that, that's kind of my thinking too, Chair. I don't, I think that if we followed along with where lodging level one is currently allowed and change those to permitted versus conditional use that we would be, we'd be, we'd be capturing. We'd be capturing it exactly where, where we would want it.
Would it make sense to split level one into a, a one A and a one B and one B stays to be the bed and breakfast ones that you, you just described that are there and one A becomes, everything changes from conditional to permitted in the residential areas? Because we're talking about two different categories now.
Sorry, so I, well, I was just thinking, so you're saying that instead of short-term rental, we would have a lodging level one, which would A, which would be bed and breakfast and a lodging level one B, which would be short-term rental?
That's a thought. I mean, we're splitting level one into two things anyway, I think, by adding short-term rentals as a standalone.
Yeah, you know. That is something I think Jeremy and I kind of, we've, we've, we've had some discussions about that, you know, as we've talked about this more and kind of tried to suss it out, you know? It's like we're redefining lodging level one in some manner. And we already have some provision in the code for it. Go ahead, Jeremy.
I think before we had spoke about all these options, including renaming all of them, but I think if I was to do it, I would just say lodging, short-term rental, and then separate it out that way. But it's just a matter of what you want to call it, I think.
Well, I, I tend to agree with that and, and this is why, because the you know, this is be, a phenomenon that grew out of people like figured out they could make money by renting out their bedroom. And it was, you know, at, at the beginning, it was pretty much always owner-occupied. And, and so it was that is, so it was never at the, at the beginning of it, people's intent to do anything other than that. And so over the course of time, the whole Airbnb short-term rental concept has changed, whereas the whole city's descriptions of lodging levels, in my mind, looking at them, reading them and understanding the history, those things were created as businesses. They, they needed business licenses. That's, you know, there was, it, it described that the different kinds of business lodging in there. And, and I'd be in favor therefore of leaving all of those descriptions as they are and, and, and adding on this step, this new thing called short-term rentals.
I think, I think it works. I think it works either way, you know? It maybe is, it's maybe in some ways cleaner to have a new term, a new short-term rental term used in the code because I think, you know, if we're starting, if we're, we're not creating a new, we're not creating a lodging ordinance. If we were creating a whole new chapter that was dealing with lodging and it included lodging level one, two, three and short-term rentals within that, then that might make sense to have sort of subcategories of those lodging levels that we already have. But we're creating an ordinance that's called short-term rental. So it's a sort of a separate thing, even though it's gonna fall under the lodging uses in some, in some ways.
Well, and if you call it short-term rentals, then for somebody who's thinking of doing this, it's easier to find it. It's easier to understand it because it's, the words are right out there.
Yeah.
I, I think that's important because, you know, people complain about the, the process of applying and confusion and everything else. So let's make it clear the difference.
I think a standalone, however you do it, Carl, is fine. I mean, it, it clean, clean it up, clear it up as best you can and whether it's one A, one B, or a standalone short-term rental. Just like Shannon makes a great point. I mean, I only, level one, two, and three doesn't mean anything to the layperson who looks at it. You have to go down, oh, a bed and breakfast is, that's level one. Oh, it's motel or a hotel. I don't know why they didn't do that in the first place. There's probably some good reason. But it does add a level of confusion for the person who's trying to look up, what's my conditions for this particular use?
Well, and, and we did have that. I mean, they, they did make a change to lodging level one, two, and three. I mean, we did have bed and breakfast and hotel motel in the code. They, they, and there might have been some other uses too, and I think they were trying to consolidate them, you know, to try and craft definitions that would capture different sorts and types of uses under these three categories. And, and that's kind of where we landed with short-term rentals. When these first started coming around, people wanted to permit them. We're thinking, well, we have to look at one of these three and we have to put it under one of them. And so we put it in lodging level one. It's the closest definition to it, but it's not perfect.
No good deed goes unpunished.
That's right. That's right.
What if you put in the definition, something like, you know, a parenthetic comment, you know, short-term rentals, you know, commonly referred to as Airbnbs, you know, and then continue on with, with, and and other names, or you, you could add in some things just so people get, get the idea of, you know, what, what is meant by this, you know, short-term rental, because that's what people think of. It's like, nobody talks about, well, most people don't say, I'm gonna, can you hand me a tissue? They say, hand me a Kleenex.
Yeah, that's a very American thing, though, right? If you go on places. Right. They don't call a Q-tip a Q-tip, you know?
Well, and if we're requiring the third party, you know, the third party, what am I trying to say? The third party handles those kind of things like Airbnb and so, so that would be natural that those things would be defined, I would think.
Except the only, the only, I would just push back just a little bit because they are businesses and businesses go away, they go under.
Oh, yeah.
Airbnb might not be Airbnb, might get bought by VRBO, and then we don't have Airbnb anymore. They might all
There's already been several mergers within the different platforms, so.
Yeah.
Could quickly be out of date.
Elon Musk might buy the whole gamut of them, you know, before the end of the year. So I, I appreciate that though. I mean, I think it's, and I think that's something, you know, something that comes along with this probably is a client assistance memo that we would put together. And in that client assistance memo, I think it would be wholly appropriate to list some of those examples, you know, here's, and, and the platforms that we're sort of expecting as, as examples, you know, when we say they have to, they have to tell us what platform they're advertising on. Here are some examples of what those platforms are. I think that would, I think that would be a good and appropriate place to, to say that.
Okay. Yeah, good point.
So Chair, back to zoning then. Are we comfortable? Your, it sounds like, it sounds like the commission is, is comfortable with staff moving forward with kind of what I described and sort of mirroring lodging level one. And we'll do a little more critical thinking about it and make sure that we don't, can't think of any reason why it should be allowed in one and maybe not another because of the difference in STR and lodging level one, and we, we will make that recommendation in the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, I like that idea.
Okay. All right, back to the table here. Okay. So finally, item number eighteen.
Yeah.
Good neighbor, the good neighbor policy, should the good neighbor policy be required to be posted onsite in a conspicuous location?
Carl, I, I would say yes, and I would also add one addition to that. And that is that the good neighbor policy should also be provided to the adjoining neighbors so that they understand what's being expected of the guests.
Who will write that policy?
I think we would cod, I think we would codify it, Chair. I think we've. Put it right in the code. These are the things that must be in the good neighbor policy.
Okay.
I think there are some out there. I've I've.
Yeah.
Seen references to them, so I suspect you could probably just pirate something from one of the other cities.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, and I and I think a lot of the submissions that we received from commissioners and and also comments that we received from the public have some some good ideas in them as well. That we could we could propose in that good neighbor policy. But. I, you know, I don't, I I think it's fairly clear what it looks like, but if there's anything that planning that the commissioners feel should absolutely not be missed. I can add, you know, we can, we can talk about those now.
Carl, do we have anything that we've discussed that says that events such as weddings? Fraternity parties, those kinds of things are prohibited?
Yes, we do. I I think and I think that was in the draft ordinance or. In the draft ordinance that Commissioner Brown had put out, and I think also in the one that staff had put together for that original meeting. I think we had some language in there about about that as well. But yeah, that's definitely something that should be in that. I would think would be in that good neighbor policy.
The Alliance mentioned it too.
The Alliance, yeah, I think that's right. They did have it in theirs as well. I think that's one that everybody kind of agrees on. That they shouldn't be holding any. Events. Events for hire or commercial functions are prohibited. That's how the Gay Harbor Alliance put it.
It needs to be more than that.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, and anybody else have other things that that they think are missing?
Are talking in general, Greg, or specific to good neighbor policy?
In general.
Okay, I had a couple of other things. Some of the cities required that the permit number that the city issues should be included in every advertisement that's that's made. We may be able to, we may not need that if we're gonna require that everything be done through a platform. But that is something that I did pick up from some of the other cities requirements. And then another thing that some of the other cities had was they require that a logbook be kept of every visitor. So those were the other two things that I wanted to add.
Those were that are those logbooks are kept in the. In the unit or they're kept by the. Manager owner or owner in this case. Or by since it's third party platform, will it all be computerized anyway?
Well, yeah, you may not need it if it's if it's if the third party platform already has that information, so. That may make it redundant, but there were just a couple of things that some other cities had that I thought were good ideas.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
Hey, Jeremy, really quick, in your research there, Jeremy did a little bit of research on what kind of information we could get from those platforms. Is that is that something that we can get from them as far as? Who? Who rented? And when?
Well, what what value does that information have for us?
I I think the probably one one area that I thought of is that if there's a major incident. That. People become aware of later on that maybe law enforcement needs to take. Take that information from that would be available.
Yeah, I believe that would be available anyway to law enforcement. I know there's through Airbnb, there's a. City portal that they have where the city can access things like the listings, how often they've been rented. Costs, things like that. I don't know about the other platforms. I'm actually waiting on a call. From somebody from Airbnb not setting that up. For us. So hopefully that their platforms have something like that as well, that can get access to.
Okay, maybe we could say then that if it's if the data is kept by the. Platform, it wouldn't be necessary to keep a logbook. Or if the platform doesn't have it, then the logbook would be required.
Yeah.
Wonder if I wonder if part of that came from COVID. And the need to do contact tracing.
It might have been. That's what they were thinking of, yes.
Okay. Other things? Go ahead, Bob.
Two things, I wanted to circle back a little bit to the. Discussion we had about the limit to the number of people that could be there if it was a single family rental. Carl alluded to there's there's building code. Out there that says there are certain. Limitations depending upon the number of bathrooms. I thought perhaps it might make sense if that number was included in. The condition of use somehow. So that or we do some kind of maximum number that's. In our minds more as reasonable as sort of counting bathrooms. It's kind of, that's a little obscure, maybe, I mean, over time, things change and. And I'm not sure how close the city keeps track of that, but. If there was like a determination by the city official that this house is sized to fit twelve people. That'd be great to have that in there. Or. If that's too many people in our in our minds for a short term rental, maybe we set a number that's lower than like eight, maximum of eight adults. I I don't want to overturn the apple cart, Greg, but I just think that we want to be clear. If there's a way to be clear about a number from the city perspective based on building code. That number would be useful, I think. And the last thing, it's kind of, we haven't talked about it yet, but in terms of the application itself, this probably Michelle's bailiwick. I'm not quite sure all the things that we that that we want these STR owners to do. Do do they need to get a business license? And then they they also need to get a city. At the city application is put in and there. And is there an inspection fee that goes along with that? I don't. Understand exactly that. And then Michelle probably told me, tried to tell me once or twice, but. Maybe you could review it one more time for us because I'd like to kind of get a sense of that application process and all the things I need to do.
They do get a city apply through for a city business license when they get their state license. And depend and that's it's forty dollars for the city business license. I don't know how much it is for the state license. And then each department does review it to make sure that the proper ERUs are being paid for water sewer hookups. If inspection is required, then building goes out and does the inspection for the business license before he signs off on it. To make sure there's. Adequate access and. Smoke and carbon monoxide detectors.
Is there a charge for that too?
No, that's included in the business license fee.
Okay.
And that's only forty bucks?
Yeah.
Grief. Wow. When was the last time they updated the business license fee in Gay Harbor?
Three years ago, but a lot of businesses, they get a tenant improvement. And through the building permit process and that's there's an inspection there, so they're making up the fees. With the short term rentals, there wasn't really. A way to charge those fees. It's not on our fee sheet.
Well, the 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 Alliance suggested not not only having a business license, but also. A requirement to have a specifically to have a short term rental license. And. And I'm in favor of that for a couple of reasons. One is to help, you know, fund the enforcement. And the inspections and those sorts of things. And secondly, it will be easier to track. You know, who's. To have a list that's not buried somewhere in the business license, you know, list, it's got to be hundreds.
Again, we do have ways to pull out. Certain businesses from our lists with the. Permitting software we have now, so you can pull up just the lodging level ones, just the lodging level twos. But there is a way to track the business licenses that way as well, but we could put an endorsement on the business license for. A short term rental. And have a fee associated with that.
Well, remember that we will have a short term rental permit. As well as a type two permit, so but prior to getting a business license. They're gonna have to go through and get get their entitlement. Through. The city, so you know, they'll actually be issued. An approved and administrative approval. As a type two permit. Be an administrative approval that will have been. Reviewed and vetted by the planning department, the building department and and engineering. And then as a condition of that. They would they would need to get their business license approved.
Well, my thought would be that we need to. Capture some funding to, because we're going to be doing some enforcement. We're going to spending some money on enforcement here and I don't know if they want the. Short term rentals to pay a part of the enforcement job. Forty dollars is not gonna really be a significant amount of money towards that problem. Otherwise, it comes from the general city city revenues. And that's not fair really to the rest of the citizens. Well, it's it's kind of, it's kind of not fair. They're paying for somebody else's enforcement of a short term rental license. That makes somebody else money, not them.
Yep. Good point.
It may be something to think about, Greg, well, as we finish this discussion.
Yeah.
The right fee structure.
I think that's a good point, John.
Yeah, I think early in our discussion, we talked about the possibility of having adding a two percent. Enforcement fee to the. What's the word? The hotel motel tax or or. As a separate fee, actually, that would pay help pay for the cost of enforcement. But I think it would also be appropriate to charge a fee at the initial time of application.
Yeah, I'd sort of forgotten you brought up that additional two percent because that would just be passed through, I'm sure, from the owners to the guests. And. So. I'd be in favor of something like that. Even perhaps more than two percent.
Yeah, whatever is appropriate.
He and then the two percent would be. When would that be charged? I'm sorry?
That would be charged each guest when they stay. So if you're paying, let's say the hotel motel tax is five percent, then on top of that, there would be an additional two percent. Enforcement fee or three percent or whatever the appropriate percentage would be.
We had also discussed along the way and. Minimal insurance coverage. Especially if the city is doing inspections of of the short term rental properties. It seems we would have an interest there for and. Make insuring they're insured. And the the common number that that. Everywhere that I read that had that requirement, the number was a million dollars minimum.
I think that's a good idea.
Same here. One other thing we might also do is ask them to name the city is also insured.
That's what we do for special use permits and special event permits, and that's an easy. Thing to add. The application requirements.
Good.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. And and the other thing that had been brought up was that and. Is that STRs would not be allowed in any tax exempt dwelling or in any government subsidized. Housing. Or in any. Tiny home developments. And. I don't know if y'all agree with that, but you that was kind of thrown out there and I we don't, I don't know that we came to a conclusion or I haven't seen it in the table.
Yeah, Greg, I saw that in my notes and I think that's appropriate.
Yeah. Would would that include? Developments like. The Rosedale Estates or whatever it is where it's a rental place for seniors. And they've they got a court decision by which they evaded paying any school. School tax basically. With their permit. You know, they saved like four hundred thousand bucks by claiming that there. There weren't going to be any children there, so they should not have to make any contribution to the. The school district. Is is would that be included? Is that one of the targets that you have in mind?
Correct.
Okay.
Chair, can you say it one more time? So not allowed in tiny homes, government subsidized housing and what was the other? There was another category there, I believe.
Any. Tax exempt dwelling. And it's not, it's not just those senior homes, but there's a number of. Different homes for various reasons qualify for. You know, real estate tax exemptions and, you know, so on, school tax exemptions. It it just doesn't feel right to me that. They should be able to have STRs in their home. If they're having those benefits already.
Yeah. I agree with that, Greg. I'm good with that.
Okay. And. Well, there it is. Term I couldn't remember that the. The Alliance's conditions and performance standards, if that was the second half of it that I could remember. So I had it at the bottom of my list, so we already talked about that. So that's the end of my list. So we might be done. Tonight.
There there's a, there's another, there's another subject that I think is important, and that is. I'd like to get a better understanding of the timeline from here on out. Whether there's going to be any more public comment. How this is going to be presented to the council, et cetera. Whether the council iterates on it and comes back with questions or suggestions or whatever. I I don't understand it and I think it's important.
Yeah, I'm sure Carl can run through that for us. Good thoughts.
Yeah, absolutely. So. Where where we're at now is still study sessions, but there there's a requirement for the planning commission then to hold a a public hearing. So once we're, once we're to a point and I'm I'm kind of hoping that we're. Getting close to a point where we. May be able to hold a public hearing on May nineteenth. I guess that that depends on whether or not we can pull a draft ordinance together for you all. To review by next Thursday, starting to sound really ambitious at the moment. But.
Carl, let me just, let me just ask, Carl.
Sure.
Would we publish anything? Prior to the public hearing so that the public can have a sense of what we have in mind?
Yes. Yeah, we're required to do that, so we'd have to, we have to post a notice prior to the public hearing. Michelle, two weeks before the public hearing. And we have to have the the materials published and out to the public. One week prior to the public hearing, if I'm not.
Minimum of ten days, a maximum of thirty days. But I usually try to do two weeks because that's.
That's what we generally, by rule of thumb, we notice fourteen days prior to hearings.
And that material would be a draft ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then from there, Commissioner Brown, once we hold the hearing. Then the. Planning Commission would deliberate either that same evening. While there would be deliberations that same evening, and then whether or not the commission chose to make a recommendation to move that. Move those draft regulations forward. Could happen that same night, or it could come back for another meeting. If there's substantial changes made to the regulations or ordinance, we may decide we need another public hearing for planning commission. That's possible. It doesn't happen very often. At any rate, then it does go to city council. The city council has would would have a. At any rate, then it does go to city council. The city council has, would, would have a first reading of the ordinance and a public hearing of their own. So people would also, the public would also have a chance to weigh in at that point, and then there would be at least a second reading of the ordinance at, at council. If council makes substantial changes to, to the ordinance, then it can be, it can, it could come back to planning commission for further study and and other recommendations. So that's, you know, it's very possible that it, that it comes back to planning commission if it doesn't make it through.
Because this is a complicated subject and because we've all done a lot of research and it also had a lot of, I think, very constructive discussion of all of these issues. I think it's very important that we present it to the council with a an executive summary with a kind of an explanation of all of the things we've considered so that they don't get tangled up in issues that are appropriate for Joshua Tree, California, but don't really have much to do with Gig Harbor. And so that there aren't a lot of questions from people who haven't spent as much time considering this. In other words, feed them as much background as we can with the draft ordinance. Does it? Did I make that clear?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Brown, and I agree. And, and everything, all the work that's been done so far is in, will be in the record. And for, for something like this, I mean, oftentimes with our ordinance, we will, of course, there will be a recommendation provided from the planning commission as well. And that, I think, usually acts as kind of the, the executive summary of the work that had been done. And we can make that as, you know, we could make that more detailed in this case, if need be, and I think we probably would, because you're right, it is such a complicated issue. And we would also have, you know, there's a, there's an agenda bill that staff writes. And sometimes we include a staff report too, to, to accompany the ordinance. Many times we just use the agenda bill as the staff report. It just kind of depends on the, the nature, the, the content of, you know, what we're trying to explain to council. And, you know, maybe in a case like this where it is so complicated, you know, a staff report might make, a, a full-blown staff report might make more sense.
It would be important to me to have a chance to review all of those documents before they go to, go forward as products of the, of the planning commission.
Okay, in the other discussion?
Yeah, Greg, just, just one thing. I am not available on the second meeting in May. I, I don't think that's any reason to change the public hearing, but I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Okay.
And, and that's still very tentative. So just, just for the record, we don't have a, a public hearing scheduled for the 19th at this point.
Okay. All right, well, thank you all for your work. Thank you all to the members of the public that have attended. And we will look forward to seeing what you put together for us, Jeremy and Carl. And I'm sure Michelle will be involved with that as well. And next business is already been described. So we'll just wait to hear from you then, Carl, right?
Yes, Chair. So the, the plan then would be that will, we're gonna, we're going to craft a draft ordinance to bring back for your consideration. Well, just for your reaction, really, sort of a first pass next Thursday. That's, that's, that's the goal. But because we had this special meeting in between, we're probably not able to get that draft out until, I think at the earliest would be Monday. And so that would be, that'll be the goal, to get it out by the end of the day on Monday. And then we'll have a study session on the 5th. If any, any changes need to be made, we can make those changes then prior to, we'll know at that point if we're ready for hearing on the 19th. Okay, again, cutting it pretty close, all, all the way around.
All right, TBD.
Yeah.
And just, just to clarify, I mean, what, what the, the question you asked Commissioner Brown, I mean, this is, what you're asking for is, is how we've been functioning all along in the, in the planning commission. The, the, every time something is sent to the council, a cover letter from the, from the chair of the planning commission goes to the council with the communication and, and that involves a back and forth between the staff and I. And and so that is, you know, that is the process. And so to bring all of that back to to the whole planning commission to review and discuss would be additional time and additional step that historically we haven't done before. But it doesn't mean we can't, if that's what, if that's what everybody wants to do.
I'm interested in seeing Carl's report. I mean, as executive summary notes go, Greg, as chairperson, you know, it's, it's, it's high level. We've studied this very hard and, and it's really key things in here. We we're, we're at probably the meat of the matter is, is in Carl's memo. I mean, the staff memo, that's where probably the, the deep stuff is, but I mean, we've been working with Carl on his memos and this input for quite a while now. There's a, there's a point, we gotta kind of trust your staff to to do the right thing. And he, they do the right thing. So I think we're, we'd be okay. But, you know, Tom's, Tom's got some concerns about, you know, getting the right message to the council. I, I guess I have confidence that, that staff will take care of that. That's just me.
John or Shannon?
Yeah, I'm willing to trust staff on that. I, I agreed with what Tom said, that this is very important, but I think staff's done a really good job, certainly up to this point, and I don't see any reason to think that they wouldn't continue to do the same.
Well, and I was gonna say, it's not only staff. I mean, Greg is also involved. And so, you know, if he sees anything that he feels is, is, you know, out of what we all have done all this time, I would think he, he would catch that or note that or in his conversations with the planning staff. Correct?
Yeah, and in fact, the last one that we sent forward, that, you know, we did have Carl presented something and I said, you know what, I think it's better for you to put kind of exactly what Tom's referring to, more explanation right up front, because if I'm at that city council reading this memo I, I'd be, I'd have a whole bunch of questions and then I'd get to the, 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 the end of the second page of the cover letter and say, oh, there it is. But the whole time I would have been thinking, you know, what about, what about, what about, what about? So you know, I worked with Carl and the staff and, and, you know, did some wordsmithing and, and I think we came up with a, with an excellent product. So you're correct, that's how it's been happening.
I'm uncomfortable with that happening the way it, it always has.
Okay. All right, folks, well, sounds like we've, we're looking forward to a, a draft ordinance and barring any other discussion, I'm willing to open the floor to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Carl, could you hang around for just a second, please?
For sure.
And Michelle, obviously.